Good evening colleagues and fellow citizens. Welcome to the January 30th, 2018, fiscal year 2019 Annual Operating Budget Public Hearing for the Prince George's County Board of Education. As always, just a reminder to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate so that they do not interfere with the taping of the meeting. Ms. Tate, would you please call the roll?
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Ahmed.
President.
Ms. Boston.
President.
Mr. Burrows.
Ah.
Ms. Eubanks.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez. Mr. Murray.
President.
Ms. Page.
Present.
Ms. Quinteros Grady. Ms. Roche. Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace. Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Wiseman. Dr. Eubanks.
Present. Thank you, Ms. Tate. The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public commentary on the fiscal year 2019 budget. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt its budget at the February 22nd, 2018 Board Meeting, which will begin at 7:05 PM. The recommended budget will then be forwarded to County Executive for Sharon Baker, who would develop his proposed county budget, including education and all of the other elements of county funding, and presented to the County Council in March 2018. The County Council must adopt a budget, which includes school system funding designated by category, and then it goes to the state legislature in April of 2018. The Board will then, if needed, reconcile with the county-approved budget, and it will be adopted at a regularly-scheduled meeting in June 2018. We are here to listen to our citizens about their recommendations on the budget, and we have, I believe, 12 registered individuals. I will just make a quick note that you're registered for public comment, where the Board of Education will listen to your comments but cannot address your comments. You'll have three minutes to make your presentation. We do have a...is the regular timer working, or are we using it going old-fashioned? Okay. So, we do have a timer there. When you hear the buzz, we ask that you please complete your final sentence only. If you have written testimony, please leave it by the side of the stage so that we can put that written testimony in the record. And you may not relinquish any part of your time to another speaker, registered or unregistered. Adherence to these policies would be greatly appreciated as we help to move this process forward. So, let us begin. We have...our first speaker is Logan Scovrin, a student at Kenmore Middle School. I believe, by the way, that the mic right there, to my left and to your right, is the mic. Yes. Good evening.
That's a new mistake for saying my name.
And so, I'm sure. How badly...how badly did I ruin it?
It's pronounced "Scovrin." Like, with an "E" in it.
Oh, "Scavin"?
Scovrin.
Scovrin. Scovrin. Oh, yeah, there is an "R" there, isn't there?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, welcome.
Am I close enough to the mic?
Please speak right into the microphone.
Like this?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the school board and distinguished guests, my name is Logan Scovrin. I am an eighth-grade student at Kenmore Middle School, and I am autistic. I am here in favor for more funding for special education. I have benefited greatly from the special education program. First at Kenmore Middle School, and now at...well, later at...first at Greenbelt Mills...Greenbelt Elementary School, sorry, and now at Kenmore Middle School. From kindergarten to fifth grade, I had a dedicated aide named Ms. Chu. Ms. Chu helped me pay more attention in class. She made sure I understood the lessons, and she helped me take notes when I couldn't do it quickly enough. And when some classes or assemblies were-
Excuse me, young man, I'm very sorry to interrupt you, but we really want to hear what you have to say, and we're having problems. I don't know if the tech folks can turn that mic up. I don't think the middle mic works, quite frankly, but can you just try to get as close to the mic as you can?
Like this?
There you go. Thank you.
All right. When some classes or assemblies were too loud for me, she would take me to a quiet place. She ensured that I understood all my assignments for homework. She was...finally, she was nice, caring, supportive, and my biggest cheerleader. Also in Old Mill School, my special education teacher, Ms. Payne, spent extra time with me, teach me how to read. She helped me develop better social skills and helped me be a better test-taker. Ms. Payne saw potential in me and helped me reach my academic goals. Another special education teacher named Ms. Roseanne helped me overcome my use of scripted speech. She also brought together a lunch bunch to help me and other autistic students learn how to socialize. A different special education teacher named Ms. Soto, who is my occupational therapist, helped me improve my handwriting and typing skills. I am now an excellent typer, thanks to Ms. Soto, and I do most of my assignments on my computer. At Kenmore Middle School, I no longer need a dedicated aide, and the autism program helped me be more independent. Ms. Edwards, Ms. Capola, and Ms. Pratt have helped me grow as a person, and I have gained confidence and improved my socializing skills. Over the past two years, Kenmore has prepared me academically, so that this year I take science and math without any special education aides in the classroom. I am a 4.0 Honor Roll student and also a member of the National Junior Honor Society. All of these people, along with my parents, helped me become an academic success, and I would not be here where I am today without early special education services and support staff. I believe that all special education students should have this kind of support. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it. I hope this speech will convince you to provide more money for special education teachers and dedicated aides and support programs. And to all the people on the above, as well as any I forget, thank you for everything.
Thank you so much, young man, Mr. Scavron.
Scovrin.
Scovrin, right, exactly. My friend, with a name like "Sagun," I can relate to people not getting it right very often, so my apologies. We will continue on, and please do, young man, if you can give us that written testimony, we would appreciate it so that we can have that for the record. Our next registered speaker is Dolores Milhouse, speaking on the budget. Ms. Milhouse.
Great job. Good evening. Get close. All right. Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, Dr. Eubanks, and the members of the Board of Education. My name is Dolores Milhouse, and I come before you yet again for another budget season, excited about thanking you for your support of language...expansion of language immersion. As I know that I've gotten a lot of calls to say, "Are you coming out?" Of course I'm coming. I do have a family that I have to manage as well, but I will always be here to advocate for what's dear to my heart, which is allowing my child to be a global leader. What's important to me is for my son, Noah Milhouse, is a second-grade tag student, and my daughter, Lisa, who is not yet in the school system, to be able to connect with other students, other individuals across the world. I am raising a global leader. I appreciate our administration working together to help me and other families raise these global children who love the language and immerse in the language in their educational system. This is allowing them to expand their horizon and will open up the world of personal and professional opportunities. I also appreciate the commitment from Dr. Maxwell, Dr. Gosin, and their teams for bringing together a parent-administrative task force that is working together to achieve this goal and to look at the benefits and the reason why we need to continue focusing on expanding the language from K-12. Dr. Nelson Mandela said, "If you talk to a man in a language he understands, that goes to his head. If you talk to him in his language, that goes to his heart." In our interconnected global world, language education has to be one of the educational goals of our school district. Bilingual and multilingual education is important for our students, as well as critical to support our students in how they are prepared for college and their careers. Our families are invested in the programs and appreciate your commitment to the continued funding of the language immersion programs. As quoted in the American Association of School Administration, "Education is the best investment we can make, one that pays off in countless dividends for us, for our children, and for our society. If we hope to maintain or improve the quality of life in our communities, attract new industries, and continue to prosper as a nation, top-notch schools are essential." Thank you for your continued support, and I appreciate you all working together. Thank you.
And thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Lisa Brown Alexander to speak on Saturday's schools.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Maxwell and administrators, I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Lisa Brown Alexander, and I'm a board member for Community Youth Advance, a youth development organization that provides academic enrichment and mentoring support for more than 400 students across Prince George's County. We're here this afternoon or this evening to appeal for Saturday School. Saturday School is a program that encourages academic enrichment with a particular emphasis in math proficiency for students in Prince George's County. Since the inception of the program, grades are rising, and our data shows 30% improvement in math proficiency, with kids shifting from Cs and Ds to As and Bs to the pleasure of their parents. The Prince George's County Public School System launched the Saturday School program at High Point High School in the academic year of 2015-2016. It was modeled after the George B. Thomas Saturday School in Montgomery County and is now run at High Point High School. It offers rigorous and fun learning focused on math and literacy, something I could have used when I was in high school. Since the program has started, we've identified a need for a second location and would like to now expand the Saturday School in the 2018-2019 school year to extend to Crossland High School, given the positive relationships we have with administrators there and the need of students in the feeder system. We request funding to renew the program for High Point High School for another two years and to launch a second site at Crossland High School in the amount of $175,000. For the record, I have included a brief letter of requests from our Chair of the Board, Albert Nguyen, and a summary of the Saturday School program and its results. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yvonne Nichols on Spanish immersion.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I just came to say that I have four children. One was fortunate enough to be admitted into the Spanish immersion program. She's now in her second year of the program. She's in the first grade. And having graduated from the Prince George's County School System, this opportunity was not afforded to me and my brother. So, I see the value. I see the difference in my six-year-old versus my 15-year-old, just having a couple of years of Spanish. And I'm very passionate about this program being funded. It needs to continue. I'm doing whatever I can to be involved at my school level, support the administration, support the board. I just wanted to come out tonight and let you know that it is effective. We really need to finish what we start. I graduated from Sutland High School, class of '90, yay! And being at that school, there were a lot of programs. Sutland has always had, like, a reputation, but we had the visual and performing arts. We've always had programs. And for the Spanish immersion to come along the way it has, I just wanted to continue to flourish and have that long future, just like all the other programs in the county over the years. But we just need to have that funding. We need more teachers. We need more support personnel so that we can make it happen. We don't want to just have a program, but we want to have an effective program. And that's all I came to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Andrew Curtis on licensing for plumbers. Is Mr. Curtis with us this evening? Mr. Curtis? Okay. Our next speaker is Suzanne Johnson on Spanish immersion.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening. Please write into the mic. I need folks to kind of...thank you.
I think she was taller than I was. All right. My name is Suzanne Johnson, and my daughter, Liliana, is in first grade at Philistine Williams Spanish Immersion School. She's not going to talk tonight. She's a little shy, but I'll talk for her. The parents at our school have made a long-term commitment to a bilingual education for our students because we recognize the cognitive, social, academic, and employment benefits of being bilingual and biliterate. The success of the county's French immersion programs in elementary, middle, and high school have encouraged the support for Spanish immersion programs. We've seen the success of graduates in the International Baccalaureate Program and students who have been awarded the Seal of Biliteracy. It is important that the K-12 French immersion and International Baccalaureate Programs continue and that we further expand the Spanish immersion programs through 12th grade. Spanish is the second-most spoken language in the United States and in the world. Therefore, we need the Board to support the budget items for the grade expansion of existing Spanish immersion programs. If not approved, the Spanish immersion programs would end at grade three. This would not only curtail the Spanish proficiency of our students, but also limit the other cognitive and academic benefits of a bilingual education. We thank the Board for their prior support and ask they continue to support this commitment to our students and join with us in efforts to ensure that they are given the foundation they need to succeed as global leaders. Another budget item that affects Pw Spanish Immersion and many other schools is the GPS Bus Locator app for parents. The long routes and shortages of bus drivers have had a significant impact on our families. My daughter and I live in Bowie, which is about 20 minutes from our school. However, my child's morning and afternoon bus routes are each about an hour and a half long, which is a little long for a five- or six-year-old, but...and these routes have over 20 stops. The duration of the routes and the distances covered increase the risk for delays, especially if there are adverse weather conditions, traffic issues, or a substitute driver unfamiliar with the route. Therefore, our families can be left waiting much longer than the 20-minute window, that is the 10 minutes before and 10 minutes after the scheduled times. If parents were able to determine where their bus was via GPS Bus Locator app, we would have a better idea of when to anticipate the arrival of the bus in the event of delays. If our children are on the bus, and there is a delay in them arriving to school or arriving home, this app could alleviate some of our concerns if we could determine where our students were. Therefore, I ask the Board to approve the funding of the GPS Locator app for parents while we entrust our school buses to transport our most precious cargo. Again, I want to emphasize the importance of bilingual education in giving our students the skill they need to be successful in their educational pursuits, employment opportunities, and future as global leaders. We are invested in the success of the county's bilingual programs and are committed to putting in the extra effort to support the bilingual education of our children. Thank you for joining us in this investment in our children's future through the expansion of the Spanish immersion programs.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Melody Spruell, speaking on nurses, librarians, and technology. Is Melody Spruell with us this evening? Okay, I hope Melody comes back next week. Our next speaker is Keisha Chase, speaking on the budget. Keisha Chase. Keisha Chase is not here. Our next speaker is Donna Young. I assume she's here. She signed up this evening.
this budget. I'm only going to start this off by actually asking a question, and that question is, does this budget this year align itself with our master plan? There's a master plan that this administration is supposed to be held accountable for when it increases the budget or decreases programs. From 2014 to present, I've seen nothing that associates the administration's request for increases or for their cutting of programs as it aligns itself to our master plan. The Board is supposed to hold the administration responsible for meeting the goals, and in light of all of the scandal with us pushing students through our school system who have not been prepared to graduate, one would think that we would go back to the basics. I am asking that this administration, this year, take a look at the master plan and identify why you're increasing certain areas, general funds or things that are not really accountable, and decreasing programs that benefit our children. Those funds, like the gentleman mentioned in special education, they could utilize additional fundings, the different apps and applications, the emergence programs, programs that are working. We are not increasing those because we're not tracking that data to ensure that that information is in alignment with our master plan. So, my question to you guys is this: At what point do you go back to the basics, align that master plan to your budget requests, instead of shooting from the hip? It is no wonder that our administration did not realize so many students were graduating, and they were not college-ready nor prepared for the workforce, when we failed to have a plan? When you fail the plan, you plan to fail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sylvia Maroquin...Maroquin, maybe, speaking on Saturday schools. Mariquin? Mariquin. Let's see how close I came. If I keep pronouncing different ones until you get here, I might be right by the time you get here.
You actually got it right, so...okay. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sylvia Maroquin. I have two kids. I have Abigail, who's a seventh grade, and Abdila, who's a third grade. They're here with me, and it's a great honor for me to speak to you about Saturday School. It's been almost two years since we joined Saturday School, and I can tell you that before we got to this program, my two kids were having difficulties with their math problems, and they would procrastinate, get their homework done because they couldn't understand it. But ever since we got to Saturday School, it's been a lot easier and fun for them to do their math work. In fact, Abigail's confidence, it's a lot better because now she's able to help her cousins and friends who need help with their homework or with their math problems. And I am asking here tonight if you could please continue to fund Saturday School because it has made a big impact on our family and our community. And if you're familiar with the area where Hypon is, we have a lot of Latinos families who are seeking help because their kids are not getting that help with their math, with their confidence. Their parents are not able to help them because they didn't attend school, and they're getting to a point where they don't know where to seek help. And this program is just outstanding. They do more than just number. They're able to make people feel comfortable about their math problems, and I want to thank you for sponsoring, and I look forward to seeing you in two years. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Pamela Boozer Struther to speak about dual-language and arts integration.
Thank you so much, and good evening. Appreciate this opportunity to make comments on the budget. My name is Pamela Boozer Struther, and I'm the parent of a second grader at Mount Rainier Elementary and a leader of our parent-teacher organization. And while I care deeply about many aspects of this budget, I did just want to focus actually on three budget items. And before I get started, I do want to thank the staff responsible for producing the budget document because, as a parent and community member, the fact that I could read this budget, search this budget, and find what I'm looking for is much appreciated. First, I want to address language learning, and I fully support the proposed budget enhancements for all language learning. As a parent, but particularly as a parent in District III, I want to note the importance of the expansions of Spanish immersion teachers and programs in this budget. In addition to dual immersion schools, which is benefiting many of the students, and Cesar Chavez in particular is in District III, we need Spanish language literacy and second language programs in all of our District III community elementary schools. And where I say the programs in the budget do not go far enough is in serving our community schools, and I ask that the administration and Board focus on this in the coming years and the future budgets. I also fully support the Arts Integration budget and proposed enhancement. At Mount Rainier Elementary, we see the positive benefits to our students every day with this program, and we are now in our third year with the program. And beyond the learning that takes place and the creativity that we...opportunities that we bring to our kids, it's also become an important community builder as the parents through the PTO have raised about $20,000 from residents, businesses, and town councils over the past three years to support these programs at our school and as well as Thomas S. Stone Elementary. And the third budget item I'd like to address is the new 1.5 million investment in the community schools' model pilot program. For many students, this system of wraparound services is critical to academic success, and I fully support PG CPS moving in this direction and building upon the work of the Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
And thank you for your time and your effort to come talk to us. Our final registered speaker this evening is Kadija Bowen, speaking on funding for tag programs.
Actually, Kadija Bowen. B-O-W-E-N, I'm sorry. I am a member of the PG Tag Board, and I am here representing PG Tag. I'm a lifelong resident of Prince George's County. I have four children, one currently tag-identified, and two yet to reach grade school. I benefited from each model of the tag program, from the pull-out model to the center model to the...I was one of the first classes to do the IB program at Laurel High School. So, I'm here tonight on behalf of this program because I believe in it, but I see it slowly being morphed into other just advanced placement studies, especially in the South. I pulled my daughter out of a charter school to enroll her into the tag program because I knew my experience, and it was an excellent one. I was a Farms kid, and so I really benefited from that program, so I wanted her to have the same experience. I was disappointed that the school did not have the resources. We moved from Bowie to Upper Marlboro, and the school did not have the same resources that I knew of at Heather Hills and Glenarton Woods where I attended. The school was down about 25 minutes from our house, even though we had a tag center that was only 10 minutes away from our house because we were over across the road or the tracks, so to say. I toured the school, even though the program online, the students were only...less than half of the students were meeting expectations. I still toured the school, and I was so impressed with the staff and the coordinator that I still sent my child to that school, and I was very happy. So, with that, I'm going to the requests for the tag- So with that, I'm going to the requests for the tag program. Last fiscal year, you guys conducted a research study that asked for, you know, different input from parents in the tag program. From this, there was found that many factors, but there was a drastic decrease in the enrollment in tag centers across the board, even the dedicated centers. This was due to under... It was due to parents not choosing the tag centers, basically, because of lack of awareness and lack of interest. The report also detailed a need to consolidate and rearrange the opportunities, tag centers, so that there is equity of feeder schools for each center, and there needs to be more oversight and accountability at the neighborhood tag centers and the centers across the county. I believe that this means that we need to allocate funds to train teachers and staff. We are getting teachers into the centers that are not trained tag teachers, and so that costs money to train these teachers, and they have to go to seminars, and they have to learn how to teach our talented and gifted students and our twice exceptional students, those that have a disability but are gifted. And we also need to... They're actually understaffed as well. I did put this in writing, so I will give you guys this, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time. That concludes our list of registered speakers for this evening. Make sure there's no one who thought they registered. Who's here? Okay, good. Is someone who thought they registered, but I didn't call your name? You didn't give us the paper? That's fine. We will work this out. We're going to get your paper from you on the side of the stage. They'll bring it to me, and then what hap... And then we'll call... And then you go... You run back and sit down. I'll call your name, and you come back up. Hold on. Let me get a chance to tell everybody who you are. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have Marcus Daniels to speak on the budget. Good evening, Mr. Daniels.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to Dr. Maxwell, all the members of the Board of Education. Thank you for your service to our great county. I just wanted to say that I'm here tonight to testify in support of Saturday School. I would like to say thank you to Dr. Maxwell for bringing Saturday School to Prince George's County. It's been a tremendous asset and resource for our youth. I am a graduate of Prince George's County Public Schools. I'm a graduate of Oxon Hill High School and very much committed to providing even more opportunities to the next generation of students here in Prince George's County. I'm also a board member of Community Youth Advance, and you've heard from one of our parents and one of our other board members about the benefit of Saturday School and its importance to our young people. I just want to highlight some key statistics. In 2017, nearly 200,000 students in the state of Maryland were left alone and unsupervised after school, and additional 280,000 were simply unable to participate in out-of-school time programs. For every dollar invested in the state of Maryland in out-of-school time programs leads to a return on investment of $3.36. That's a good investment. Prince George's County Public School students who participate in Saturday School are more likely to attend school regularly, be engaged in learning, have better academic outcomes, demonstrate healthier behaviors, and are less likely to engage in juvenile crime. We are asking that you continue to support the Saturday School program at High Point High School for an additional two years, and please consider adding a second site at Crossland High School. Myself, just a quick testimony, I wasn't the best student when I was in middle school and high school, but I had great teachers and people who were willing to give back to me and take a little extra time to help me become a great student. Ultimately, went to Morehouse College and graduated with a degree in finance. And now I'm here in Prince George's County doing commercial real estate to build sustainable communities for the next generation of leaders. So I ask you all to please continue to do the great work that you're doing. Please continue to support our young people, and we ask that you would continue the great work that the Saturday School program has provided to not only our young people, but as parents in the broader community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Just make sure anyone else had a sheet of paper that they didn't fill in. All right, wonderful. Thank you, sir. Thank you, citizen... Fellow citizens, for coming out and speaking with us this evening. As a reminder, we will do this one more time with a budget work session at 5:00 PM and a public hearing at 7:00 PM next Tuesday, February 6th, at Oxon Hill High School. Please come back again yourself and speak to us again if you would like, or please call your friends and colleagues down in South County and encourage them to come speak to us and give them their opinions and feedback on the budget. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Have a great evening.